At this time, I will call the November 12, 2024 council meeting to order, and I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Ms. Huester?
Here.
Mr. Riddles?
Here.
Ms. Map?
Here.
Mr. Chambers?
Here.
Dr. Lee?
Here.
Ms. Walden?
Here.
We do have a quorum present and continue with the meeting, so if you will, please stand and join me in the prayer and the pledge of allegiance. And at this time, Mr. Griffin will render the prayer for us on tonight.
I agree with him. Father God, we thank you for the day. We thank you for the blessings that you give us because all things that we have come from you. We thank you for the opportunity to be about the business of the city and to be a part of the decisions that are made. And we pray, Father, that you'll give us the guidance to make decisions that are in the best interest of our citizens. We thank you for our city. We thank you for the folks that are here. We just pray that everything we do tonight will stay tonight. We'll honor you. We'll make this prayer in your name. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we have no one to have signed in tonight for public comments, so we will continue our meeting as outlined. At this time, I need a request that we amend the agenda to add one item. Our city manager failed to include his report on the published agenda and has the need to report on and discuss some items with us. Therefore, he has asked, and I am requesting that the agenda be amended to the city manager's report after the mayor's comment. Do I hear a motion to amend the agenda?
Second.
I have a motion and a second being made. I will ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Ms. Huester? Mr. Riddles?
Aye.
Ms. Map?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
The motion carries and the agenda is amended. You all have received a copy of the October 22, 2024 council meeting minutes. Are there any corrections that need to be made? Hearing nine, the chair will entertain a motion to adopt the minutes.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Ms. Huester? Mr. Riddles?
Aye.
Ms. Map?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
The motion carries and the minutes are adopted. I don't really have any comments on tonight. I guess I would like to say recognize Georgia College and State students who's here from Mr. Wilkinson class that you're here from tonight. Welcome. We love having you all here and come as often as possible. Not just to get a grade, but come as often as you'd like to be here with us. We also have our executive director of the Central State Redevelopment Authority, Ms. Mary Damian. Ms. Mary, stand up and let everybody see who you are. Don't just wave at us. Yeah, there you go. Thank you. This is Ms. Mary Damian. Ms. Mary, you're in your first year as executive director. Thank you for being with us this evening. This evening, if previous meetings or any indications, we probably have students, and we've already covered that. Are there any other students with us tonight? Maybe from Ballin High School, GMC? No? At this time, we'll move to the city manager's report, and I'll recognize Mr. Griffin for his report.
Thank you. I will do my best not to have my report on the published agenda from now on. I'm not real sure what I was thinking about when I put that together last Tuesday, but I did not catch it until I started working through my notes for tonight's meeting. We do have a new face in the group up on the dais tonight, so I would like to introduce you to Courtney Chavers. Courtney is our new clerk for the city of Milledgeville. Today is her first day working. Courtney comes to us from the city of Bainbridge, working in the police department in Bainbridge. And I'll just go ahead and tell you the reason she was the pick of the committee and the pick of me with the folks that we had to interview is that on her own, taking time off of work with her vacation leave and paying for it herself, she has completed the first 15 hours of clerk's training. So she wanted to be a city clerk, and we were fortunate enough to be able to get her here in Milledgeville, and we're excited to have her. So as I told Mr. Jordan in an email earlier today, we now have a city clerk. And while Ms. Hilsom Butts has held up her end of the bargain very well, my slack will be being picked up now.
Thank goodness.
Outstanding job.
But I do want to publicly say how much I appreciate Melba and what she's done while we have been without a permanent clerk. And she has done a wonderful job as interim clerk. And I appreciate her, and I tell her that at least weekly and sometimes daily. But I thank you so much for what you've done for us. I appreciate it.
And I'd like to second that emotion.
We have a public hearing tonight that the folks that will be presenting for the public hearing will be sharing information with you on that. So I'm not going to comment on that, but I do want to comment on a couple of other items that are on the agenda. And the first reading is ordinance O2411-12, which is the first reading of the ordinance to levy and assess taxes for the 2024 year. I have put at your desk the five-year digest and then some numbers on some recommendations to consider for the millage rate. You all will remember that last year, the millage rate was increased to 12.12 mills to fund the 2023-2024 budget. And when the 2024-2025 budget process was ongoing earlier in this year, we looked at doing what we needed to do in terms of funding that budget by increasing some user fees. And of course, we've got some increases in utility fees coming based on the bond that we'll be issuing for the water treatment plant, which probably will go out to bid sometime in early January. So that's how close we are. We'll be bringing, I say we, me and Mr. Jordan, we'll be bringing some items to you in future meetings in terms of appointing the members of our Public Facilities Authority that was approved by the General Assembly during their last legislative session. And also talk about the bond amount and servicing of the bond. But as you all know, the county did a major reevaluation on the tax digest this year. They had been doing some reassessments, but this was a reevaluation this year. And fortunately, the property tax digest for the county and for the city of Milledgeville has increased dramatically since the last reevaluation was done. I don't know when that was, but if you look at the five-year history, you'll actually see that from '22 to '23, the city tax digest actually went down. So it was good that it came back up and certainly good that it came back up to the level that it did. You'll notice in the information that's in the chart that was at your desk that I put four scenarios of the millage rate as it currently is, at 12.12 mills, and then looked at decreasing that millage rate by a quarter of a mill of down, excuse me, by half a mill and then by another quarter of a mill to three-quarters of a mill and then one mill in terms of the decrease. Just to give you a little bit more information, if you look at the, what one mill of taxes equals between '23 and '24, you'll see, and did the calculations on that, you'll see that one mill of taxes for the city's digest actually increased by 18.36%. And the five-year history shows it. It's the five-year history that we will publish. But if the millage rate stayed at 12.12 for '24, as it was in '23, then the MNO taxes levied would increase by a little over $1 million. We have done, y'all have done, with me making recommendations, wonderful work in the budget process in the last two years to redo the salary scale, to make some additional services available, to hire some additional personnel, to do the things that we really needed to do to really get the city to the point that we needed to be as we have, as we continued to come out of COVID and all the things associated with that. But I feel really good about where the city is. I think you all do as well, just in the conversations. And so without going through the individual calculations, because depending on the assessed value of a piece of property, every piece of property is going to be different. But I believe we can fund the current city budget and set ourselves in pretty good shape, pretty, a good fiscal shape for the 2025 budget if the millage rate was rolled back by three-quarters of a mill. So from 12.12, looking at rolling the millage rate back to 11.37. I'll be happy to share those individual calculations with you one-on-one if you'd like for me to. But you'll notice the resolution has the millage rate blank because this is the first reading and the time that will be determining what you all's thoughts are on setting the millage rate. We will need to set that millage rate tonight in order to be able to run the five-year history that will need to be published in the paper this Saturday in order to be able to vote on and approve the millage rate at the last meeting in November. So I'm going to pause in my report right now. I'm not done, but I'm going to pause in my report right now and see if any of you have any questions or comments about the recommendation for the millage rate and see if there's anything that I need to answer for you all on that recommendation.
So your recommendation is option B?
My recommendation is option B on the chart that you have in front of you. Yes, ma'am.
I'm comfortable with that recommendation.
Okay, all right. Well, and I'll, you know, we can certainly, we can certainly talk about it some more. We can have a call meeting about it if we need to, but we'll need to, we will need to put this five-year history in there. If we get the millage rate approved by the second meeting of this month, tax bills will go out by December 1, and the deadline to pay those will be January 31. So it'll actually be a month longer than the county has for theirs being due, which I think gives the people a little bit of relief in the process too, especially towards the end of the year. But I feel confident that we can remain physically sound by going to the 11.37 mills and continue the good work that you all have done, especially in the last two years on the budget.
So Ms. Huester and Ms. Map, do they have this information or?
They actually had it in my biweekly report. I realize that my biweekly report, when I printed it, that chart printed too big, but option B is on that. And they had it in the biweekly report that I emailed to them earlier towards the end of last week.
Ms. Map and Ms. Huester, are you all comfortable with 11.37?
Yes, Mayor, we have our books with us as well.
Okay, I asked, were y'all comfortable with it? And Mr. Riddles said he was okay. He was going down the road asking, are we comfortable with it? I think everybody is. I just want to make sure.
Okay. The second item on the agenda that I want to mention is the L-MIG resurfacing. You all will remember when Paul Simonton was here talking about the roundabout, which I got that final report last week. So I'll be sharing that with you all in the coming weeks. And it's actually got a price quote on there so we can start looking at the possibility of seeing if we're going to be able to do that. Not a price quote, a price estimate, to see if we'll be able to do that at Jefferson and Dunlap. But he talked about the L-MIG resurfacing project. Just to remind you, we have banked '22, '23, and '24 L-MIG money. We also received some additional L-MIG money that the governor and the General Assembly put forth this year that we will not have to, we will not have to match. The funds that we will need to match with a 30% match are the '22, '23, and '24 funds that we've banked. Those funds, along with the 30% match as required, would end up totaling about $1.1 million. You notice that the contract with Reeves Construction that is before you tonight is for a little bit more than that. It is for $2.4 million, excuse me, $2.5 million. And that actually includes a change order that is part of your packet and is in your book where a stormwater drain, a cross drain, will actually be replaced by our folks as opposed to the Reeves Construction people. And then a change order that extends the resurfacing on Down Street a little bit further than it needed to be, than was in the original bid and needed to be extended some. We actually have two other streets that we're looking at that may come back as additional change orders that we may fund through ARPA. If that ends up being the case, I will certainly, I will certainly share that with you. But we can, we can take care of the contract that is put forth based on the L-MIG funds that we have, plus the required match, plus some remaining older SPOLOX funds that we can utilize to take care of this. It's six miles of street, which doesn't sound like much repaving for $2.5 million. But if you remember, when I shared the quote with you, there are some of those streets that are actually full-depth reclamation, which means they're going to build them up, get down to the dirt, and get them where they need to be before they're repaved. And that is obviously a huge piece for that process. So that's the reason it's a little more expensive. But it's just like everything else post-COVID. It's just plain expensive to get things done. So I'm recommending to you tonight that you all approve that contract with Reeves Construction based on where it is. I intended all day long today and just didn't get to that point to pull up the state revenue website to see where we are in T-SPOLOX collections. But I'll make sure that you all have that information by the time we meet the next time so that we can look down the road at when we want to pave some of our more traveled roads. The county has a sign up at the log cabin Jefferson Street intersection now about roadwork for this week. I talked to the county manager and asked him if they were actually going to pave log cabin. And he said, not at this point in time. What they were doing right now was going to be side streets. And so I'm sure that they'll be interested in knowing where we are in terms of the potential roundabout at log cabin and Sinclair Dam and Jefferson Street intersection before they make any decisions on paving log cabin, as we will before we make any decisions on paving North Jefferson Street. But that's where we are on that contract. I'm good with the contract. Reeves Construction was the last company that did our L-MIG resurfacing. And I think we did about, maybe about four and a half miles at that point in time. They were real good to work with, good to notify us when they were going to be in certain areas so we could let citizens know that. So I heartily recommend that contract to you all tonight.
So this will have to be published on the website?
We can certainly do that. You know, we have a list published of the streets as they're rated. So what we could do is we could go in on that rating sheet and highlight the ones that are being paved in these because they're the ones that will actually move down to the rating sheet once they get completed anyway. Yeah, we'll certainly do that.
It'd be worth noting this on our social media channels as well, letting people know to anticipate when that improvement is coming.
Right, right. And we will certainly get that information out. We're kind of on the cusp of about to get into not-so-good pavings season with winter. So this may not actually start until spring, but I haven't heard, Reeves Construction will let us know that once. If you notice, I know Ms. Walden has because she and I have talked about it, there may be some of the streets in your district that have orange markings on them and arrows and those kinds of things. That's been put there by Reeves to signify which areas will be resurfaced. So they are already out looking at the streets and getting their, getting their plans together for deployment. I'm just not real sure when that will be. But when I do know, I will certainly let you all know that. My last item is two pieces of material that I handed out to you this evening. As you all know, we are having to go through the lead service line inventory process. We've talked about that a good bit. Ms. Huester asked some questions about it, and I gave her the whole history of it one day when she already knew it. But where we are in that process is you all approved a contract with Utility and Water Services to start determining what the status is of lead service lines with our customers by doing the potholing technique that I've mentioned. And we anticipate that they probably will get started in late November. We don't know exactly when yet. But you have two pieces of material that I shared with you tonight. The first is a letter that states notice of unknown lead status for water service line material. This is a letter that has to be sent out to all of the customers for which we have not determined the status of if there is lead in their supply lines or not. Just to give you the numbers, we have 7,451 water customers. We were able to definitively determine that 1,894 of those customers did not have lead service lines. So we're going to have to test 5,557 lines. And that's what the, that's what that contract with Utility and Water Services will do. So the letter is, was put together using an environmental protection agency template that is required. This letter will actually be going out to those customers this week. So I want you to know that they will be getting that letter in the mail. If anyone calls you and asks you questions about it, you can obviously just simply refer them to the Water and Sewer Department here at the city, which is what they've been, which is what has been shared in the letter to do. But the letter does a good job in explaining what the requirements of the process are. The second piece that has the graphic on it is actually a notification that we'll be putting out on our social media channels, on our website. We'll be getting it out to the print media, to radio and TV media that shows exactly what a service line is, how that's going to be tested, where it's the property owner's plumbing, where it's the city's plumbing. And this will also have the date on when Utility and Water Services will be starting. It will not be November 18, but as soon as we know when that date is, we will put that on here. And then we will get this information out about a week before then. But we wanted people to realize that folks were going to start maybe coming onto their property and digging little holes on each side of their water meter. And obviously, they'll do it in a manner that it can be put back to basically like it has not been bothered. But once again, if there's any questions or concerns, they can contact the Water and Sewer Department. And I just wanted to let you know that these two things would be going out within the next week to week and a half. So if your constituents contact you about them, you will know what they are, and they can contact the Water and Sewer Department, contact me if they'd like. And we'll explain them through that process. Once it's determined the status on each of those 5,557 lines, then a number will be determined as to, based on the requirements of the law, how many of those lines have to actually be replaced. And right now, the law says that the city will be responsible for replacing those lines, even though they are the line between the meter and the house. That may change. And we'll be, we'll be watching the law from the EPA perspective to determine if that will in fact change or not. And this, this contract with Utility and Water Services was created in a manner that there may actually be some replacing of those lines happening once the determination is made while they're there. But we have, we have secured an additional $2 million in GFA money to use to replace those lines if we need to. If you remember, we're using GFA funds to do the inventory. But those funds will be totally dismissed from a debt standpoint. We will not have to repay those funds if we use them in a timely manner, and you know that's not going to be a problem. And we'll just see what we've got left to replace when that time comes to determine if we need to use any of the GFA funds that we have, we have available to do that. My preference would be not to use the GFA loan to do that if we don't have to. But we will see what that figure is when that time comes and determine what needs to happen with that. The only other thing that you have is the reapportments that need to be made tonight. I've shared with you my report, and they are part of the agenda. And the mayor will cover those when it comes time in the meeting in order to do that. So one last thing. You all know that we have to have all of our ARPA money allocated by December 31 of this year. That will not be a problem. And then we have until December 31 of 2026 to actually expend that money. So we'll be bringing some contracts before you at the next meeting in November. And then the one meeting that we will have in December, as I anticipate, we'll counsel the second meeting in December since it's on Christmas Eve. And we'll be using the remaining money in those ARPA funds to replace some equipment with. We're going to pay for some multiple years of INCO as we migrate to the cloud for that process. And we'll be looking at And we'll be looking at expending some of that money on some archiving software that we've been looking at in the past. We have a new clerk now, so we may look at getting her some archiving software so she can go ahead and start getting things archived like they need to be. I know HR wants to be a part of that as well. And so we're not going to have an issue spending all of that money, but we may be bringing some contracts to you, and we'll be bringing some contracts to you in the next two meetings to get that done. Just to remind you, we used about a little over half a million dollars on that to give two COVID bonuses for staff. We used a million dollars of it for the new SCADA system that's still currently being installed, a little over $2 million on stormwater projects. So we've done some really good work with that money that we might not have been able to do if we had not received those funds. So I'm glad that we've been able to use those and I think use them in a way that shows that we have been a good steward of the taxpayers' money. So I will bring you all a final report on that during the meeting in December to let you know where we stand on that. Mayor, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we will now move to old business, which is to conduct a public hearing to consider ordinance O-2409-16 to rezon property located at 1012 Fernwood Drive from single-family residence to PD plan development for the purpose of future development. The procedure for conducting the zoning and planning hearing will be as follows. Once it has been determined that the public hearing has been properly posted and advertised, the clerk will read the proposed amendment to the land development code. We will then hear a report from the building of official, including the advisory decision of the planning and zoning commission. Counsel will first hear from the applicant and anyone who wishes to speak in favor of the amendment. We will then hear from anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the amendment. If anyone speaks in opposition to the amendment, we will then give the applicant an opportunity for rebuttal, but the rebuttal must be limited to the points or issues raised by the opposition. We will then give the opposition the opportunity to speak in rebuttal. They too must limit comments to the points or issues raised. Please make sure that before you speak that you come to the podium and give your name and address for the record. Anyone wishing to speak on the matter is encouraged to do so, but comments must remain relevant, concise, and polite. Madam Clerk, has the public hearing been properly posted and advertised?
Yes, it has.
I will ask the clerk to please read ordinance O-2409-16 by caption.
This is an ordinance to conduct a public hearing of an ordinance amending the land development code to allow for rezoning of 1012 Fernwood Drive. This property is currently owned by Woodland Terrace Properties LLC and zoned single-family residential. The applicant desires to rezon to plan development for future development.
At this time, I will recognize Ms. Sandra Wilterspoon for her report.
Good evening.
As was mentioned, this is regarding property which is located at 1012 Fernwood Drive. The property is owned by Woodland Terrace Properties LLC and is currently zoned single-family residence. The applicant is here tonight to rezon this property to PD, which is planned development for future development and expansion of their current property. At the October 7th, 2024 P&amp;Z meeting, the P&amp;Z council unanimously approved this request. So we are here tonight for you, mayor and council, to get your final approval on this rezoning. Any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Wilterspoon. I will remind anyone who wishes to speak to come to the podium and state your name and address for the records.
Hello, my name is Randy Griffin. I'm the managing member of Woodland Terrace Properties. My residence is at 128 Heritage Court in Macon, Georgia. We're seeking to have the property rezoned for the purpose of developing the final phase of the cottages. I hope all of you are familiar with the cottages. The cottages includes 68 patio homes that we built between 2004 and 2011, and also 36,000 square foot, 33 suite assisted living residence that we built in 2019 and opened just in time for COVID hit in April of 2020. Happy to report that the entire community is doing extremely well. The assisted living residence is full, and so are the homes that we lease there. The expansion here is to, as I said, finish the final phase. We have eight duplexes. By the way, this is Don Smith, who is our civil engineer with Carter Engineering. The final phase will include eight duplex units for a total of 16 additional patio homes and a clubhouse, which will be roughly 2,800 square feet to serve the community. Each of these homes are roughly 1,450 square feet. They have two bedrooms, two baths, a built-in one-car garage, front porch, and a screen porch, which our original homes did not include. If you approve the project tonight, our plans are to proceed with civil engineering and hopefully break ground on the project in the early spring to get it completed. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
You said these eight are duplexes, right?
That's right.
That's 1,400 square foot per side of the duplex or a total for both persons?
Per side, that's right.
I'm just excited he's going to have somewhere for me to park my car and a porch for me to sit on.
Yeah, one thing we learned over the years, we have three other communities similar to this, and we've learned that front porches are important.
Yes, they are.
I'm excited. I remember when the cottages started, I was wanting to real estate agents to sit up there and watch the dirt. So we're excited that you're expanding there.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, is there anyone present who would like to speak in opposition to the amendment? Great, so there's no one wishing to speak in opposition, therefore there's no rebuttal needed. Are there any questions or comments from council?
I have one question, and that is the area of property that is, I guess you would describe it as the right hand looking at it from the backs to, I think this is Burndale, that it comes into, is there anything that will be developed in there in that open space right there? Or is that just going to be left as a buffer?
We have, it'll include the stormwater detention for this expansion and a buffer, very nice buffer there.
Thank you.
Thank you. This concludes the presentation of evidence in the public hearing. Is there a motion?
I move to accept the findings of the P&amp;Z board and approve this request.
Second.
It's been properly motioned, second. I will ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Map?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Amendment is approved, and we move on. That was the only item on the old business for tonight, so we will now consider the new business, which is a part of the agenda. I will ask the clerk to read by caption ordinance O-2411-12, setting the 2024 tax year at Valory Millage rate as a first reading.
This is an ordinance to levy and assess taxes at whichever mill rate you all decide for the support of the mayor and alderman of the city of Millisville for the 2024 tax year and to provide for the collection of the same. So we are moving for the 0.75 mills?
Yes, 11.37 would be the actual millage rate.
Okay, 11.37.
A five-year tax history will be published in the Union Record this Saturday, November 16th, and the ordinance is scheduled to come back before council on the 26th of this month for second reading and adoption. I will ask the clerk to read resolution R-2411-48 by caption. See, this should be 49, not 48. We have one for 42.
Actually, it should be 2411.
2411-48.
That's the correction on the 2409-42.
48, I think it is. Is that the correction on the 48, Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Okay, so it should be 2411-12 instead of 48.
No, -48, 2411-48.
Change this to 48, is that?
Is this the tower attachment?
Resolution to authorize a Fifth Amendment to the tower attachment lease.
So you have it as 2409-42, and it should be 2411, is what we're saying? That correction on that, clerk?
What I have here is 2409-42, but we'll make the correction. 2411-48.
48, yes, ma'am.
Okay. This is a resolution authorizing the Fifth Amendment to the tower attachment lease agreement with New Singular Wireless PCS LLC to modify the terms and conditions for the placement of equipment and rent on the water tank located at 139 Robertson Mill Road.
You have heard the resolution. Is there a motion to adopt?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I will ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Ms. Shinholster? Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Map?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
At this time, I will ask the clerk to read resolution R-2411-49 by caption.
This is a resolution to authorize an agreement with Reeves Construction Company to resurface and rehabilitate approximately six miles of city streets to be partially funded, to be partially funded by the Georgia Department of Transportation Local Maintenance and Improvement Grant.
You have heard the resolution. Is there a motion to adopt?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none.
I don't think I've seen two right.
I will ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Map?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
The resolution is adopted. As mentioned by the city manager in his report, we will vote tonight on the second batch of 2024 alcohol license renewals, following the voting process put into place in 2023. The individual applications are listed in the attachment to the resolution. I will ask the clerk to read resolution R-2411-50 by caption.
This is a resolution to approve the alcohol license renewal applications as set forth on the attached Exhibit A for the calendar year 2025.
You have heard the resolution. Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved. Second.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I will ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Map?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Resolution is approved. We have a number of appointments to make tonight. If there is no objection, I will offer each group of appointees for their specific entity, and I will ask that you vote on them en masse for that entity. The first entity is the Central State Hospital Local Redevelopment Authority, and I nominate Dr. Joy Nelson and Mr. Owen Pittman to that authority. Is there a motion to confirm this nomination? Don't move.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, I will ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Map?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
All right, so Ms. Nelson, Dr. Nelson, and Mr. Pittman are back on the local redevelopment authority. The second entity is the Millisville Housing Authority, and I am appointing Mr. Randy Clark to that authority as the resident commissioner. Per state of Georgia law, appointments to the housing authority are reserved for the mayor, and there is no need for a vote to approve this appointment. The third entity is the City of Millisville Ethics Board, and I nominate Dr. Veronica Womack, Mr. Irving Griffin, Ms. Pamela Beer as member of the board, and Ms. Carrie Jarrett as an alternate member of the board. Is there a motion to confirm these nominations?
Motion to confirm.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I will ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Map?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Moving on, the last entity is the City of Millisville Pension Committee, and I nominate council member Steve Chambers, council member Jeanette Walden, Ms. Vicky Waller, and Ms. Melba Hilsom-Butts as employee representatives, Ms. Marilyn Pelt as the retirees representatives. Is there a motion to confirm these nominations? Don't move.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I will ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Map?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Neither Counselor, Attorney Jordan nor Mr. Griffin has informed me of a need to go in closed session for this evening, this time. So we do not need to go into closed session tonight. This concludes the item on the agenda. Does anyone on council have any questions or comments? I would like to say congratulations to our newest mayor person up here on this dais, Mr. Walter Reynolds, at lovely ceremony on Saturday night. And then I want to make sure we give our condolences to Mr. Chambers' wife, Ms. Teresa, on the loss of her mom, myself, Mr. Griffin, and Ms. Shinholster took time to step in, and I know everyone has called to give their condolences as well. So is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I will ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Map?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Well, we stand adjourned.